Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, February 1st, 2021. We welcome to the February meeting of the Milford Board of Aldermen. This meeting is being conducted remotely, and as we begin, I wanted to take the opportunity to highlight a few guidelines to ensure business runs efficiently and that all statutory and administrative rules are followed. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act and Governor Lamont's executive orders, this meeting is being recorded and will be made available on the City of Milford's website. If a member of the board would like to speak, please utilize the raise your hand feature via Zoom, and please do not speak over one another, and when you are not speaking, please keep your phones and computers on mute. After being recognized to speak, please state your name prior to making a statement. With that, will everyone please stand up wherever you are, and please join me as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag. United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
Indivisible, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and just.
Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Beatty.
Alderman Beatty would like to be excused, Madam Secretary.
Thank you. Alderman Gaynor?
Here.
Alderman Genentasio?
Here.
Alderman Golden?
Alderman Golden would also like to be excused, Madam Secretary.
No, 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 I'm here, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Now we can hear you.
Thank you, Phil.
Alderman Hardiman?
Thank you, Janet. Thank you.
Alderman Harla?
Here.
Alderman Marlowe?
Here.
Alderman Parente?
Here.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Here.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Here.
Alderman Sutton?
Here.
Alderman Vitron? Here.
Alderman Vitally?
Here.
Alderman Willis?
Here. I'm sorry, Alderman Tranquilly, I'm here.
Thank you. Fourteen present.
We have fourteen present, we do have a quorum. The next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment. Please use the raise your hand feature via Zoom or state your name if you're using the conference line. Statements are limited to the legislative function of the Board of Aldermen. The time limit granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the board at this time or provide comment through email. The board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. We will see the following public comments via email. Penny Masilis, 111 Broadway. Fran Breben, 32 Morning Miss Road. Harley Schultz, 100 Seaflower Road. Kim Thompson, 6 Stowe Avenue. Karen Collins, 56 Flora Street. Nancy Idling, 136 Zutonic Drive. Wendy Terenzio, 24 Art Court. Jeff Viscount, 59 Chatham Avenue. Eric Johnson, 40 Benson Street. And Shelley Vinek, 9 Winsong Lane. This correspondence has been forwarded to all members of the board and will be included in the record. A copy can be found on the Board of Aldermen website. Alderman Sutton, agenda item number three, consideration of minutes for the regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board approves the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen held on January 4, 2021.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Hey Dad?
Alderman Golden?
Franky?
Alderman Hardiman?
Frankie?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yeah.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitron?
Yes.
Alderman Vitally?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Madam Secretary. Agenda item number four, there are no special meeting minutes considered. Agenda item number five, Chairman's Report. Just want to let everybody, ask everyone to take it easy in this crazy storm we're having tonight. Be careful driving and be careful shoveling and help your neighbor if you could in case they can't do it themselves, and we wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day coming up. That's it for Chairman's Report. Open under Rule Six, Agenda Item Number Six is Mayor's Report and Recommendations. Is there a report from the mayor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to echo what Chairman Vitro just said. Please be patient out there as you're driving, stay off the roads until we're able to clear the streets full and final. For any of you who have been out shoveling your sidewalks or your driveway or your front stoop, you know that as soon as you clear a pathway, another two, four inches of snow has already fallen from the heavens. That's true throughout the city. Our Public Works Department is doing a fine job under these very difficult conditions. We have all of our plowing apparatus out there, all of our team working very hard. Since last night, they've been flat out. Since noon today, the, there's really been a whiteout. It has been falling at about two inches an hour since noon, and it will continue on at least until midnight tonight with that type of pace and then drift off a little bit, but continue to snow until tomorrow morning is what they forecast. So that is a lot of work for all of our plow crews. It is going to take a long time to mop up and sop up this. It's going to be plowing streets, the 1,200 city roads that we have probably for the next couple of days in terms of fine tuning it. I know that there's frustration whenever it takes a little bit longer, but this was a significant blizzard. This was not a typical four-inch, six-inch snowstorm. This was a significant storm, is a significant storm, and it keeps coming down. So my hat's off to all of our Public Works crew members who are really working as hard as humanly possible right now. I know that, or I believe that, our Public Works Director will be on to answer some questions. Please be patient with him, he's been in a plow truck and been working to make sure that our city streets, 257 miles of center lane streets are plowed. Again, it is very difficult because as soon as the streets are plowed, another couple inches automatically go right back on, and that's compounded by the fact that we have a lot of breeze that are causing a lot of drifting. So in addition to that, we have to worry about some coastal flooding, our low-line areas along the shoreline. We are making sure that everybody stays vigilant because around 1:30 tonight, we have another high tide that we're anticipating. This is a significant storm. Also see that Deepa Joseph, this woman, Deepa and her team have been doing a fantastic job managing this pandemic for our health department, for our community. They opened up, they've stood up a vaccination site over at our Parsons Government Gymnasium that they man Wednesdays and Friday afternoons. They've been doing that now for almost two months. They have hundreds and hundreds of Milford residents and surrounding community members that have been vaccinated over the course of that period, and they will continue to do it Mondays and Friday afternoons for the other five and a half days of the week. Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, Friday morning, Saturday, and Sunday. We are partnering with Yale New Haven Health, Bridgeport Hospital. They have taken this ready-made clinic that Deepa and her team, as well as Public Works, so hard to create, and they are manning that for those days of the week so that we have a great opportunity for residents to get vaccinated. Right now, we are in 1B, the first prioritization phase of 1B, which is 75 and older. The governor intimated today in a conference call that within 10 days, the next phase of 1B will start, which is 65 to 74-year-olds. So that should be happening within the next 10 days, what we were told today. Other than that, I do want to thank Deepa and her crew because again, I can't tell you how difficult we have had over the course of the last 10 months and how they have risen to the challenge. So with that being said, if you have any questions for tonight's agenda, please do not hesitate to ask me. I respectfully request your consideration and action on those items listed in the agenda. February, the primary agenda items are generally the bonding ordinances. As you see, we have the traditional three bonding ordinances. The first one, city improvements, I suspect there's going to be some questions about that. The one thing I do want to highlight is that normally we have, and again, this is not a fast and hard rule, but traditionally, each February, we have approximately $30 million in bonding ordinance authorizations, and approximately 25% of that, or to a third of that, is reimbursable through some type of state grant. This year, the bonding is a little bit lighter, or at least this February meeting, the bonding is lighter. It's only around $17 million, not 30, because we anticipate that the Pumpkin Delight Project, which your board authorized design money for a year ago, will be coming down the pike sometime later this year, before the summer, sometime late spring, early summer, we will have the design more fully complete so that that project could be put out to bid for the contractors, and we will have a better sense of what it's going to take to bond. That project, we anticipate is going to be approximately $12 million. So that is why this February meeting is a little bit lighter than it normally is. But if you do have questions, please don't hesitate to ask me. I do see that most of our department heads that have projects associated with this bonding cycle are on, including the leadership from our Milford Public Schools, including our superintendent and our assistant superintendent, and everybody is available to answer those questions when they come up. And with that, again, I respectfully request your consideration on tonight's agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Open up under Agenda Item Number Seven, there is no unfinished business. Agenda Item Number Eight, moving on to new business. Eight A, Alderman Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board approves the appointment of Emily Sobchak, 52 Dogwood Place, as a member of the Veterans Ceremony and Parade Commission to fill the present vacancy, term expiring December 31, 2021.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton? Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitron?
Yes.
Alderman Vitally?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Secretary, motion passes unanimously. Alderman Sutton, Agenda Item Number Eight B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board approves the appointment of Walter Ortaleva, 244 Seaside Avenue, as an alternate member of the Milford Historic District Number Two, south of the Green, to fill the present vacancy, term expiring January 1, 2022.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitron?
Yes.
Alderman Vitally?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Secretary, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is eight C, Alderman Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You know what? I'm sorry, at this time, will our newly confirmed board and commission members raise their hands to be sworn in by our city clerk.
Mr. Chairman, I do see Officer Sobchak, I do not see Walter Ortaleva online, so I do see Emily Sobchak.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi, Emily, can you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully execute and discharge your duties and responsibilities according to law as a member of the Veterans Ceremony and Parade Commission to the best of your ability to help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Emily.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item eight C, Alderman Sutton. Alderman Sutton. Alderman Sutton.
We sleep it.
Alderman Sutton, you're, I think you're on mute.
I think he's frozen, Mr. Chairman, it looks like his screen has been frozen.
Oh.
Wifi and data that we have these days because of the storm has been not so hot, so I think that he may be frozen right now and may need to sign in.
I can do eight C, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like.
He's frozen.
He's still frozen?
He did too much shoveling.
Hang on one second. Wait a little bit. We're going to, we're waiting for a little bit to see if Alderman Sutton has come back online. If not, Alderman Frank Smith, would you read the motion?
Why don't I read it, and if Tony comes back on, then I'll go back to mute. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, we're on eight C.
Eight C, Alderman Frank Smith.
Board of Aldermen approval is requested for the attached resolution, grant application for the Department of Human Services.
Second.
Second. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Tony just wrote to me, and he said that his connection went out, he's trying to log back on now.
Well, the motion has been read and seconded. Alderman Vitally?
Are we at discussion?
Under discussion, correct.
Just through you, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, what is the amount for that grant? Because neither, I don't think, now, listen, I missed it, Human Services and Family Services, the next one, didn't put any amount for that grant, so I was wondering how much that grant was.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitally, Deepa Joseph is online, our Director of Health Services. These are three standard grants that we apply for each and every year that help fund human services. For one of them, Human Services, Youth and Family Services, for one of those grants, however, we are really the pass-through, we are the grantee, and there is a sub-grantee that we act as the pass-through, but Deepa can tell you the exact amounts, they're pretty consistent each year, they do shift a little bit, but.
Just wanted to know approximately what we were talking about. Deepa, are you on?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor. So for the Human Services Grant, which is the eight C, it is typically around $15,000, but it varies from year to year. For the Youth and Family Services, which is eight D, it is typically around $32,000 per year, also varies from year to year. And then eight E is through the Office of Early Childhood, and that's the one that Mayor Blake was referencing, where Human Services is really more of the pass-through agency for this funding that goes to Good Shepherd Daycare, also known as, currently known as Good Child Development Center, and that funding is close to $1 million through the Office of Early Childhood.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Did Alderman Sutton get back on, Alderman Sutton? I guess, no. Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitron?
Yes.
Alderman Vitally?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
We have thirteen in favor, I don't think Alderman Sutton's back on yet.
Thirteen, thirteen yeses, the motion passes. Next item on the agenda is eight D. Alderman Sutton's still not on. Alderman Frank Smith, would you read the motion, please?
I think it would be eight E. I think we just did eight D, Mr. Chair.
We just did eight C.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Not moving as fast as you thought. Board of Aldermen approval is requested for the attached resolution regarding grant application for youth and family service activities.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton? Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitron?
Yes.
Alderman Vitally?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
Thirteen in favor.
Alderman Sutton, did you just join?
Yes, I did. Unfortunately, my iPad is not getting a good signal, only my phone is, I apologize, I'll be on phone the rest.
Okay, so did you hear the Madam Secretary read your name, you're in favor of the motion?
And this is eight C?
This is eight D.
Eight D, yes, I am in favor.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Alderman Sutton.
All in favor?
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is eight E. Alderman Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board approves the attached resolution regarding grant application for Office of Early Childhood.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Marla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitron?
Yes.
Alderman Vitally?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Secretary, motion passes unanimously. Next item agenda, on the agenda is.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approves the attached allocation transfer number four, Marina Repairs and Memorial Garden.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitron?
Yes.
Alderman Vitally?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Secretary, motion passes unanimously. At this point, I will entertain a motion to reorder the agenda to move items 12A1, 12A2, 12A3 as the next items on the agenda so we can vote on the bonding ordinances.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, roll call vote, Madam Secretary.
Alderman Gaynor? Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente? Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is 12A1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board approves the ordinance as passed on by the ordinance committee appropriating $12,732,000 for various public improvements and authorizing the issuance of $12,732,000 bonds for the city to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Sorry about that, I forgot to make up. Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number 12A2, Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The ordinance committee met earlier and considered an ordinance appropriating $2,750,000 for various school improvements, authorizing the issuance of $2,750,000 bonds of the city to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance, they are making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. The ordinance request was recommended by unanimous vote to the full board, and I'd like to make a motion to that effect.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, Madam Secretary.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion passes unanimously. At this point, we'll return to agenda item. Next item is, item is 12A3, Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The ordinance committee met earlier and considered an ordinance appropriating $1,995,000 for the design and construction of sanitary sewers and wastewater facilities, and authorizing the issuance of $1,995,000 bonds of the city to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla? Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Next item on the agenda, at this point, we'll return to agenda item 8G. Alderman Sutton, agenda item number 8G.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board approves the attached resolution regarding cash advance for various public improvements 2021.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Sutton, agenda item number 8H.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approves the attached resolution regarding cash advance for various school improvements 2021.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call vote.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion passes unanimously. Next item agenda is Alderman Sutton, agenda item number 8I.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approves the attached resolution regarding cash advance for design and construction of sanitary sewers and wastewater facilities 2021.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing, hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Sutton, agenda item number 8J.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approves the attached recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission dated January 25, 2021, pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 8-24 for the purchase of One Tour Road, also known as Zero Old Point Road, and to authorize the mayor and city attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said purchase.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing, hearing... Alderman Gaynor?
Hi, good evening. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor, I believe, completely in favor of this purchase. I think it's great for the city of Milford. It's certainly great for the Third District, opening up much-needed space for local nonprofits and community use, as well as possible recreation. But I have one question with the, you know, beyond the structure itself, are there any plans for the nine-plus acres? If I'm not mistaken, I think it's in the CDD District. So I guess, is there a way to ensure that down the road, the land wouldn't be partialled off or sold off for any kind of commercial use?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Gaynor. As you mentioned, the vision for this property, it is a little over nine acres, is for recreation purposes, as well as to support our youth. As I think you know, or I know you know, the Boys and Girls Club has had their eye on this property for a while. They were in contract, or contract-to-contract for several years with the parish. That fell through for a variety of reasons, but the city is looking to partner, as we have the last many years, with the Boys and Girls Club. They support over 600 of our local Milford students, and it seems like a natural place to put them. They've already done the light work and the research to kind of vet this property. It is a great fit. It's, you know, right across the street from where they are currently housed. It adds more recreation space, especially the gym. Our recreation department during most winters, we are busting at the seams right now in terms of gym space for basketball programs, for a whole host of indoor activities that require gym space, above and beyond what we're able to offer at our recreation gyms like West Shore and Fanny Beach, and the eight elementary schools that the Milford Public Schools offer for recreation needs. So we do, we will benefit from the gym space, and as you mentioned, will benefit from a community aspect for the space for, you know, the Walnut Beach Association has expressed interest in utilizing some space, and a whole bunch of other community organizations, I think, will benefit from this. It will also, another aspect of this, which I know has been discussed by the Board of Education, is for swing space. As I mentioned earlier in the meeting, Pumpkin Delight is the next big project that we have. During the renovation of public Pumpkin Delight, it's a big renovation, they're going to require swing space. The building committee, for which Marty Hardiman and Ray Vitale are on, are considering this school, which was a school up until just a few years ago, as a potential space to satisfy that need during construction. So there's a host of benefits in terms of parcelling this off that is not part of the vision that the city has. So I would say no. I think that the fact that it does offer a little bit of breathing space for an area that is south of the Boston Post Road, close to Walnut Beach, where we have a lot of density, you know, it's a good area to kind of leave as recreational space for the community needs.
Thank you very much. I agree. I think it's a wonderful thing, and I just wanted to see if we could ensure that it would not be then broken up in any way down the road. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Gaynor. Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Frank Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo Alderman's remarks. It had been anticipated for a while. It was, as we know, under consideration by a local developer for a fairly large development in that area. As Alderman Gaynor and Alderman Hardiman and I know, the Third District is probably the most densely populated area in our city. And any opportunity we can get to get some breathing room there, while also providing some great great public amenities to the people of Milford and the people that the, this area, of course, has been a school since, for over 50 years. As much as we lament the loss of St. Gabriel School, it's heartening to know that it's for many of, even though we have a congested area, we also have a lot of great community organizations in the Third District, not the least of which are the Boys and Girls Club, the Wildermere Walnut Beach, and the other beach associations, including Laurel Beach, that have been very active over the years. I know there's, all my heartily in favor of this and the mayor for making it happen. I know we're always interested in inducing taxes, and we're able to do that successfully consecutively. It's also good to know that some of our our city sites and landmarks, the public places are being preserved for the public good, and I look forward to working with the community once and when the purchase is complete. Provide such much-needed space for some of these public organizations. So I will be supporting this and appreciate the mayor's...
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Alderman Winsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the mayor. I do support this, as long as it is used for community organizations or recreational facilities for the city, or things of that nature. I do think it is, or the city should not be in the real estate business. There are certain situations such as this, where it would benefit certain community organizations or otherwise. Mr. Mayor, when you were answering Alderman Gaynor's questions, you sounded like you had indicated that the intent is to use it for that purpose, for community organizations and the like. But would you be able to make a commitment to use it for those purposes? And not for commercial development or otherwise?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Winsmith, I commit here and now that this property will not be used for commercial development. I have no intention of that. As I mentioned, the vision is for youth activities, recreational activities, and community organizations. We have no intention to parcel it off and sell it to a developer, quite the contrary. One of the benefits of this acquisition is that it will remain a recreation community space for years to come.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion on the... Alderman Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the mayor. I think it's a great purchase. I think, obviously, all has been said about it, that, you know, the need at that side of town, and with a lot more equity involved and parity. Mr. Mayor, do you know offhand how many rooms there are in that building? And is that gym a full-size gym, just like our, well, I can't say, just like all the other elementary schools, but is it pretty close to a full-size gym?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitale, I have walked the entire facility. It is a gym that's bigger than any of our elementary schools' gyms. It has a full-size stage. It is, again, bigger than any of those gyms. It also has a couple of rooms directly off the gym, in addition to the kitchen. There are, I believe, 12 full-size classrooms, and then a couple of smaller type classrooms. I think that when the school was operational, back in like 2000, it had over 300 students in it. So it was a school that was able to accommodate that type of class load. But I believe that even at its, you know, height in terms of enrollment, it never had more than one classroom per grade, so that some of the classrooms were pretty full. You know, it also, I think it also had a media center that was a classroom. It had generally two big preschool programs, so those each took up a classroom. So there is approximately a dozen full-size classrooms that are a little bit larger than the classrooms that are in our traditional element, public elementary schools, but it has fewer classrooms than our... it has fewer classrooms in our traditional public elementary schools.
Yeah, I remember it as a, you know, having one, one, one section of each of the classroom, uh, grade levels. So therefore, having said that, Simon Lake will still house the Police Department, Police Academy, and the Board of Education is sharing some of that space. So how many rooms do the, does the Boys and Girls Club have at Simon Lake at this point? Do you know offhand? How many do they use?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitale, they have several different spaces that are hodgepodge together. They take up some space over at West Shore for their high school program, West Shore Recreation Center. They take up some space in the pod area of Simon Lake, and some of those classroom spaces have removable walls, so I don't know if I can even give you a classroom space because.
That's, that's, yeah, that's probably irrelevant, but what I'm trying to get at is because it's loosening up some of the classroom space and that, so a lot of community organizations can move into those classrooms, probably, and have meeting rooms, because I think that was the request on some of the public sentiment tonight on the public sessions. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Genentasio.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the members of the board, and Mayor Blake. I, I would like to first congratulate the negotiating team on this. I, I think this was a, a fine purchase price. We were able to purchase this property under the appraised value, and I, I think that's a, a good thing. Rising in support of this, I think it checks off all the boxes. As discussed, we're preserving open space. We're able to put it to use immediately through the Boys and Girls Club. And also, we have room for expansion of recreation fields. I'd like to see the vision be possibly another turf field on that side of town for the, for the youth to utilize. I, I know that we're backlogged with basketball courts and the use of fields, and I think that this will fit into our needs quite well. I would also like to possibly entertain the possibility of having our seniors on that end of town have some accessibility to the building in some way, shape, or form. So I, I think it's a positive, all in all. You know, in a situation like this, I, I think we are in a great position to take advantage of the opportunity. This could have been a, a development. I feel that there's too many apartment buildings in the city, and I'm glad, for whatever reasons, the developer decided not to move forward with the project. And I think that the city of Milford's going to benefit from this long term, and all of us on this board, as elected officials, should take pride in this purchase. I, I think it speaks volumes to the board for all of us recognizing this as an opportunity and not letting it slip by. So I, I truly feel good about it. I'm, I'm happy to vote yes on it. I do have one question, through you, Mr. Chairman, and Mayor Blake. I know that there's probably some upfitting, some money that's probably going to have to be spent structurally to enhance the building, or make it safe, or bring it up to code, whatever the case might be, and I just would like to get some, an estimate of what that cost may be.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Genentasio, there was a conditions assessment that was done back about two years ago. We don't know the full extent yet, but we did take a look. You know, when we did tour the building, we got some assessment for some of the, the big-ticket items, things like the roof. There's all, out of the entire facility right now, there's one small leak that only occurs when the wind is blowing in one particular direction, and it is situated just in one little corner of the, of the gymnasium roof. Other than that, the rest is, is watertight. We do have to do some repairs. Eventually, we will need to replace that roof, though, because it's approaching its useful life. There are some other things that need to be remediated. Overall, the school was just used, I think, four years ago as a full-string school, so it is still something, or it is still in relatively good shape. There are some issues. There was some vandalism that took place recently that was reported in the newspaper. Most of it is cosmetic through a coat of paint. It will probably, probably be remediated. There's a couple of gla, you know, glass doors that were also broken, but by and large, not huge ticket items. There are some remediation efforts, like we've seen at some of our public schools, that eventually need to take place. At this point, I'm not sure if any of those are critical, but there is some upkeep and securing of the facility, making sure that we update things so that they're up to two thousand twenty-one code that we'll need to do right of way. As you see in your bond resolution or the bond ordinance, we have allocated approximately two hundred thousand dollars for kind of an initial securing of the building and updating of the, the building and the property as, as part of what is before you.
Well, thank you for the additional information, Mayor Blake, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I look forward to voting yes. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gainer?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Oh, yes.
Alderman Harlow?
Yes.
Alderman Marlow?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vetro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, Alderman Sutton, number eight K.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approves the attached resolution regarding freezing of sick leave benefit payer for William Garfield Recreation Director.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gainer?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harlow?
Yes.
Alderman Marlow?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vetro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Sutton, agenda item eight L.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approves the attached resolution regarding request of public assistance tropical storm Isaiah.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gainer?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harlow?
Yes.
Alderman Marlow?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vetro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, item nine, there is no new business. Agenda item number ten, there are no budget memo transfers. Agenda item eleven, moving on to refunds. Alderman Sutton, agenda item number eleven A.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approves refunds as attached to our packet in the amount of thirteen thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and seventy-two cents.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gainer?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harlow?
Yes.
Alderman Marlow?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith? Alderman Frank Smith, you're muted. Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vetro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number twelve, are there any reports of standing committees? Hearing none. Open under, agenda item number thirteen, are there any reports, any of the special committees? Hearing none. Agenda item number fourteen, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made, and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion?
I need to adjourn because the mayor's calling me to tell me to move my car.
Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gainer?
Yes.
Alderman Genentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harlow?
Yes.
Alderman Marlow?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vetro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Stay safe.
Have a good night.
Stay safe. Stay healthy.
Likewise.